2023 to order. If you would all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. If you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, electronic devices, if you would kindly put them on silent or vibrate or shut them off, I would appreciate it. Just like to let you know that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube channel, DHS TV Media. It's also being taped and broadcast later on over the next few weeks on both Channel, DCTV, Channel Nine and Channel Eighteen at a number of different times. So we thank them for that. Roll call, please. Ms. Condon.
John Nunes.
Yep.
Mary Waite. Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Waite is unable to be here tonight. Okay, that being said, we've allocated 10 minutes on the agenda for public comment on things that are on the agenda. So, Dr. Banks?
For the opportunity to speak. Ongoing contract negotiations.
Dr. Banks?
Yes, sir.
I just need you to, no disrespect, say who you are so we have it for the minutes.
I shall, thank you. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Peter Banks. I am completing my 21st year as a teacher at Dartmouth High School, and I have served for the past 12 as the leader of the Science and Engineering Department. While each leader's experience is unique, mine serves as an example of what it is that our lead teachers do. My stated objective when I agreed to become the leader of the Science and Engineering Department was to work collaboratively with the very talented and dedicated professionals in my department to incorporate authentic science practices and tools to make science instruction at Dartmouth High School truly modern and reflective of the needs of the 21st century. Towards this end, this is what we have accomplished. We have expanded our offerings to include aquaculture, environmental science and sustainability, robotics, biotechnology, organic chemistry, crime scene analysis and forensics, advanced placement environmental science, and advanced placement physics. We have sought and obtained grant funding from a variety of sources, including a state workplace training grant written by the superintendent's office. Our students now employ a wide range of sophisticated sensors, 3D printers, laser cutters, DNA electrophoresis apparatus, and thermal cyclers to amplify minute samples of DNA. We have a fully equipped engineering suite and a state-of-the-art biotechnology laboratory that is the envy of any high school in the state and many undergraduate teaching labs. Our students are designing, permitting, and building a nature walk-in outdoor classroom to be used by all departments. They are establishing and maintaining aquatic ecosystems in a number of classrooms, counselors' offices, and other public areas for all to enjoy. They are introducing recombinant DNA into organisms and observing the expression of those genes. They are extracting and analyzing their own DNA and conducting DNA fingerprinting experiments to identify individuals. They are exploring antibiotics and antibiotic resistance in bacteria. They are culturing their own microbiomes and conducting independent research on bacterial growth, resistance to radiation damage, and symbiotic relationships between bacteria and insects in the wild. In short, our students are doing authentic, research-based science, not just talking and reading about it. Every member of my department will agree that I have worked tirelessly with them to achieve these outcomes and transform our department. For these efforts, I have been paid $86.89 per week with not a penny's increase to my stipend for 10 years. For perspective, my son last year, a high school student at the time, earned more working a single five-hour shift at Chipotle's than I did for a full week as the lead teacher of the Science and Engineering Department at Dartmouth High School. We both had a good laugh at that, but it's really not very amusing. It's emblematic of how this school committee has historically relied on and taken advantage of the goodwill and the willingness of Dartmouth Public School educators to do what is right for their students, no matter what. It is regrettable that the school committee and the superintendent's office choose to shortchange those who directly impact the classroom while bolstering the superintendent's office instead. This year, despite loud claims of poverty from the school committee, Dartmouth Public Schools has added an additional Director of Curriculum to the district administration. While this will no doubt make things easier for the superintendent's office, those of us who actually work in the classrooms do not see the need to expend well over $130,000 on an additional administrator at Bush Street, when our very hard-working teachers aides, the ones who directly impact our students every day, aren't even paid a living wage. It is regrettable also that the school committee and the superintendent's office think so little of the contributions made by the lead teachers of each department, that when we ask for an adjustment after 10 years of no pay increase, we are initially offered a raise of $7.50 a week, or almost enough for me to fill the fuel tank of my vehicles four times over the course of a school year. Obviously, if you expect to have any lead teachers at the end of the school year, your initial offer will be increased. But the message has been sent. You either have no real idea or simply no interest in what lead teachers actually do. Perhaps you don't understand that during that dreadful hybrid year when we returned from COVID, lead teachers were told that they would be grading all of the work done by students whose families had decided to keep them home and instead learn remotely. For me, this meant over 50 students, including the children of school committee members, resulting in over three hours every week grading the work of students that I did not know in classes that I did not teach. All of this work was completed by me at home on evenings and weekends. Over three hours every week for 40 weeks is well over 100 hours of my time and my family's time. For that, as was true for every lead teacher, I was compensated not one dime. Perhaps you also don't understand that this year, we have been told that on top of our current responsibilities, lead teachers will also shoulder the role of instructional coaches. At the middle school and elementary schools, these are full-time positions, worked by coaches who are not directly responsible for students. At the high school, this is being put on the backs of lead teachers, whose primary responsibility is the 60 to 80 students that we teach in our classes. We are also responsible for developing and expanding our respective department's curricula, which further begs the question of why we need an additional Director of Curriculum since we already do that. We plan, organize, and oversee departmental common planning time. We analyze the results of MCAS and other standardized tests and use the data to inform changes to instructional practice. We order, receive, and distribute materials and supplies for our departments. We serve as sounding boards and offer shoulders to our departmental colleagues as they struggle with the very challenging environment of post-COVID classrooms. We serve as proctors for standardized tests, and we serve as substitute teachers when there are not enough to go around. Now, we are also expected to serve as instructional coaches, typically full-time positions and defined by at least one of our Directors of Curriculum as involving lesson observation and feedback, co-teaching, modeling of instructional practices, collaborative lesson design, lesson study, learning walks, collaborative problem solving, and student work analysis. This is patently absurd. The only possible way for lead teachers to be in the least bit effective as instructional coaches is for us to devote less time, less thought, and less energy to the students that we teach every day. This is the last thing that you should want from the leaders of each department, yet this is the entirely unreasonable expectation that is put on us. I have resigned as the lead teacher for Science and Engineering for two reasons, neither of them being because I want to. I'm resigning first because my family asked me to. For too long, I have donated my time on weekends and evenings, and they have not been fairly compensated for my inattention and missed memories. The monetary equivalent of one shift at a fast-food restaurant per week does not greatly change the circumstances of a middle-class family of five. It makes hardly a dent in the college costs that we are now facing. Enough is enough, and my family has had enough. Second, I'm being told to do a job that forces me to make an untenable choice. I can choose to devote the considerable amount of time and thought required to be an effective instructional coach, but that will undeniably make me a less effective classroom teacher, and that's a nonstarter for me. My other choice is to continue being the best teacher that I can be, and therefore, by definition, be an ineffective instructional coach because of the lack of time. I choose none of the above. It seems to me that you should, too. This model has been poorly thought out and will obviously not result in a functional instructional program at the high school. So what is the point, other than to be able to claim that we have a coaching program in place? Finally, I respectfully ask that as you engage in negotiations with your educators, you consider the long-term aspirations and needs of this district. I strongly suggest that you focus your support far less on what is happening in the superintendent's office and far more on the dedicated people who are actually doing the excellent work taking place every day in Dartmouth Public Schools. I thank you for your time.
You got it. So, good evening. My name is Taryn Defries. I've been an employee of the Dartmouth Public Schools for nearly 10 years. I began as a one-to-one teacher's assistant. I was a general education teacher, and now I work as a special education teacher. I'm also an alumni of the Dartmouth Schools. But tonight, I'd like to speak to you as a mom. I welcomed my first daughter in July of 2021 and recently found out that I will be having another daughter in June. While my family and I are beyond excited for a new addition to our family, we cannot help but think about my impending maternity leave and the stresses that it brings. Currently, the district offers eight weeks of leave. This comes unpaid unless the employee has sick time accrued. If we do, we are allowed to use the days. We have, but once they are used up, our leave becomes unpaid. Anytime beyond eight weeks is unpaid, and we cannot use our accrued time unless we ourselves require the further care of a doctor. If we require this care and we happen to have days left, we may continue to use them. Otherwise, we will not be paid regardless of medical need. I'd like to compare this to the paternity leave that my husband receives through the state of Massachusetts, a program that is not offered to Dartmouth employees. He receives 12 weeks off at 80% of his pay without having to use a single day of earned time off. He's able to use those 12 weeks in any way he sees fit within the first year of our child's life. So it's not just the state that believes in a 12-week leave. The American Academy of Pediatrics has also stated that 12 weeks should be the standard paternal leave due to the increased health benefits for both parents and children and the need for bonding. However, it seems that the Dartmouth Public Schools do not hold this belief. When asked about extending our leave from eight to 12 weeks, still unpaid, still using our time if we have it, we were told, no, teachers belong in the classroom. So my family takes a backseat to this job, as other teachers have stated, more times than I care to admit, and I don't think the first three months of my child's life is a time they should have to come second. Since working in the district, I've been told that I matter. If I matter, shouldn't I be given the chance to use my earned time to heal mentally and physically? Shouldn't I be afforded the same opportunity to bond with my child as my husband? The request for a 12-week leave comes at very little to no cost to this district. So on behalf of every parent, soon-to-be parent, working in the Dartmouth Public Schools, I ask that you please take this request into consideration.
Also, okay. Next item on the agenda, we have the regular session minutes of January 23rd.
I'll move approval. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins. Second by Ms. Amorall. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Executive session minutes of the same date, January 23rd.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair, with a stipulation that they be held until the matters under consideration are finalized. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins. Second by Ms. Amorall. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The school committee meeting of February 2nd, 2023, which just for everybody's edification, was held via Zoom, just so everybody is aware.
I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oliver. Second by Ms. Amorall. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mr. Chair, as others are not present.
Yeah. Passes 320. I'm sorry, 301. My fault. Okay. Okay. Student rep report. Dale.
Hello, all. So just to quickly update you on how DHS is doing. We recently had a presentation from Rafia Shadow. I thought it was excellent. It talked about how New Bedford contributed to the Underground Railroad. It was very nice. I thought it was very well-formulated for a public speaker. Usually, when you imagine someone coming into the school, you think of, you know, everyone's in a big auditorium and they're on the stage. It's hard to pay attention. But in this case, it was right here in the library, and it was a small set of students that came in periodically. I thought it was a very good setup. Winter sports are going very well. Hockey is going to compete in Providence, and Winter Track, I believe, at least a few are going to States. I think the whole team's going to States. Although, a bit of a shameless self-plug, the robotics team had a very good weekend. Out of the 21 teams in the qualifier tournament, our teams were number one and number two. So one team would be guaranteed advancement to States, the other one probably, but we're not sure yet. So to talk about something slightly more serious, with the principal Shay's recent email about the cellphone policy, I feel like it's a good time to bring up the student body's opinion on it. And as you might have guessed, it's mostly negative. We live in an age where a lot of people depend on their cellphones, and so being away from it for even an hour is a lot for some people. Now, to put a personal touch on it, I personally don't, I haven't been affected very much by it. It's not, it's not a huge distraction for me in classes, but I can see the argument that, in general, it doesn't solve the problem that it aims to solve, which is that cellphones cause distraction in classes, and so by putting them in hotels in the room, people will pay more attention, when in fact, I think, we've seen out of every year I've been in DHS, and I'm a senior now, the most creative and exploitive ways to use Chromebooks and just other elements of students' backpacks to slack off in class. And so I think the overarching point is that kids who don't want to learn will likely continue to not learn, even with their cellphones in hotels. And so it ends up being more hurtful to the students who are actually hurt by this policy and not incredibly helpful to the students who were expected to be helped by this policy. And so to end on a good note, students are looking forward to February vacation. So that's all I have to say.
That's the best part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
So I just want to say thank you. I super appreciate you sharing your opinions with us. These are good things for us to hear, positive, negative, and everything in between. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent agendas.
Yeah, we should have some folks here. We're going to do the Spanish Portugal trip. So we have, I believe, Melissa Lomba, Jason Borges, and Nathan Carvalho should be here to talk about that trip. Yes, he is in charge.
Yes, he is. Benjamin, where's Benjamin? There. I don't have a Mac, Ben. How do I do this? I'm an HP guy. I don't do this stuff. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. He's my student. I can't survive without him. So hello, good evening. I am Nathan Carvalho, a Portuguese teacher here at the high school with Jason Borges, another Portuguese teacher at the high school, and Melissa Lomba, Spanish teacher here at the high school. And we're here just to talk to you guys about a trip we'd like to do April break next year, so 2024, to take our students to Spain and Portugal. I know Melissa has done it in the past. I have gone on trips when I was in high school. Jay have not, so this would be his first, and he's extremely excited for it. So as world language teachers, you know, there's only so much we can provide for them in the classroom about the languages that we're trying to teach them and the cultures. So what better way than to bring them there so they can see it firsthand? So that's our hope. So before you, it's somewhere in here, we just have a quick overview. Obviously, there's a lot of tentative stuff, but this is basically what it would be. It would be a 10-day trip during April break next year. They may miss a day of school, which I'm sure they won't mind. But so we'll bring them to Spain first, a few days in Spain, and then we would end up, wrap up in Portugal, and then come back home. So that is basically the plan. So I'm showing you, you want to know the numbers. So we have been working with EF Tours, which I know Dartmouth High has worked with in the past. I have dealt with them when I was in high school. That's where, that's who we went through. I don't know if that's who you used when you went.
Yes.
So EF Tours, very reputable company. They've been doing this for years. They have all the essentials that are needed. So currently, it would be $3,679 for students, but that is including everything. That is flights there and back. That is the hotel every single day. That is breakfast and dinner every day. That is transportation every day. That is a 24-hour tour guide. That is our ticket entries, everything. That's already all included in that. The only thing that is not included in that is lunch. So with all that in there, it's relatively not as awful as it sounds. So I was speaking with the representative from EF Tours today, actually, and she said, you know, as soon as we can get the ball rolling, all students need to do, she'll have a parent meeting, obviously, first, before we make anything official. Parents can ask their questions there, get right from the source, and then it would be a $95 fee for students just to sign up. And then there's all different payment plans that the company has that could help them get that down. We also came up with some tentative fundraising ideas. Obviously, we want every student to be able to go, no matter their financial situation. So that is definitely a goal of ours. So we came up with a few, whether it's calendar raffles, chocolates, dinner sales at local restaurants, outdoor movie night, which I know Melissa, who's a junior class advisor, did, and it was a great success, and any other ideas that we can come up with to make sure that it can definitely be done for all our students. So that is our goal. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Yeah, I think my kid was signed up for one, and then COVID hit. So I hope, you know, fingers crossed, you all get to go and have a great time.
Yeah, I would agree. Is this the first overseas field trip since before COVID, prior to COVID?
Yeah.
So I'm thrilled that we're able to.
Yeah. I know there was one planned just before COVID hit, and then that got squashed. So no, I'm, since I've been hired, this is my second year here at Dartmouth, so since I've been hired, I always wanted to do this. So. And then I convinced.
I will say that I think my child was on the one that was canceled, and it was, I think, EF Tours. And I will say, they are very reputable, and they are very good, and they worked with the parents to make everyone whole. So it's a great company that you've chosen.
And they have this new thing, which I wish they had when I was in high school. It's like GoFundMe, but it's not. GoFundMe is a whole different thing. But it's through EF Tours itself, where a kid can say, you know, help me get to Portugal and Spain, and any family member or anyone can send them money, and that automatically goes to their balance. And it's not like GoFundMe where they take a portion of it. Every ounce of it goes to their balance, which is a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing, too.
Excellent. No, it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
When you have the meals at the restaurants or that, please make sure that we know about them. Okay? Anytime I don't have to cook, you know?
We'll bring a doggy back just for you, don't you worry.
1-800 reservations. We call early for preferred seating. So that would be, but seriously, you know, to support the kids, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins. Second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Is Ian? Yep, there he is. Mr. Flint, we've got, you're up there. We've got the indoor color guard going to Philadelphia, and then the World Championships for Color Guard, Winds, and Percussion in Dayton.
So this year, we have similar trips to what we've done in the past. We'll be sending, we're looking to send the Color Guard, the Percussion, and the Winds all to World Championships in Dayton, Ohio. This year, the trip, we were able to reduce the trip cost a little bit. We're down to $900 as the total trip cost for all three units. The Color Guard goes one week. They'll actually be flying out to Dayton this year because the way the schedule worked out and the quantity of students, it was pretty, it was actually more affordable to fly them, believe it or not, because of busting costs. So we'll be flying the Color Guard out one week, and then during break week, the Percussion and the Winds group will be going out staggered for their championship weekend. So it's three rounds of competition at World Championships, so we hope to do quite well. We have done well in the past, so hopefully that turns out great. The Color Guard, this year, we're not going to send the Winds and Percussion down to New Jersey for the regional. That has to do with just saving a little bit of money. We had an alternative option in Connecticut, so that's where we're going to be sending them, just for a day trip, to get kind of out of the local region. But the Color Guard, their score counts towards their rankings going into World Championships, so it's important we get them to a regional late in the season. So that's why we're looking to send them down to Philadelphia for the regional.
Any questions for Mr. Flint?
No, after looking over all the packets of paperwork, I have no concerns, and I wish you folks the best of luck.
Thank you.
Do it all in one fell swoop. Can I get a motion to approve the World Championship for the indoor color guard, the East Power Regional for the Color Guard, the WGI Indoor Percussion and Dance Team, and also finals for the indoor winds?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Oliver. Second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ian.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Ian.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Dr. Dale here for our Spotlight on Kids for the Cushman School. Squeaky.
You're in the man, Ben.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I have...
I have a slideshow for you with two embedded videos of children, and they are speaking to you spontaneously, off the cuff, with no practice. So I want to give a big shout out to Liz Vossi, who gave me a hand with this, and also to Alicia Frick, our new outreach social worker. So we are the Cushman Crayons, and this is a picture quickly of our new sandbox, which has a roof over top and benches, and the kids have just been having so much fun in the sandbox and with our Do Feinstein toys that went along with it. I will say, we had a little incident last week where the sandbox is currently closed. A little friend got sick, so we're going to figure that one out.
Yep.
So I wanted to put this quote in, you know, "Make the most of the best and the least of the worst." We are in challenging times right now, and I have some challenges of my own at the school with some challenges here at the district. But the teachers, together with myself, we're trying to focus on positivity and looking at all the things that are good. And we have a lot of great things going on. So I want to spend some time sharing with you how kids play and how kids have fun tonight. So before we get there, some challenges. I want to say that at Cushman School, some of the number-one challenges are the rolling enrollment. So at age three, if you have multiple disabilities and gone through the eligibility process, you can come into a classroom. And for our teachers and our teaching assistants, that is very challenging because you have your classroom set up, you have your routines learned already. And next thing you know, you have a new friend coming in, just turning three, and the whole apple cart can get, you know, tossed over. That is a challenge, and it happens to us. Every week, we have new friends. So just wanted to bring that up. The needs of our students that are coming in are also very, very challenging now. We are seeing children with complex, complex profiles, and we accept them on day one and learn more about them as each day goes on. The needs of our teachers within the building, they are, they have two hands, and the teaching assistants have two hands. And we have two spots left in our preschool, so that means of the preschool sections at Cushman, we have most of our classes at 15. So you can just imagine what that is like with the two adults and with the complex challenges. So I am in full agreement that we have a lot of challenges going on right now at the Cushman School, but we have some plans on how to bring some support and to help each other. And then the biggest challenge of all is just how much we want to accomplish in any given day. There's so much that we want to get done with our three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds, kindergartners, and you only have so much time in a day. So that is, that is always a challenge. But our strengths are the amazing school community. And when I say school community, I'm talking about the teachers, the teaching assistants, the related service providers, talking about the district office, I'm talking about the school committee. I feel very supported, and I feel that I know we have the challenges, but our families, our PTO, our CPAC, our community partners, all of those things are good, and they bring us resources and knowledge that really should be celebrated. And I'm happy to say that we have a great school community. The popularity of our program, just the waitlist alone is, continues to be, from last year, we're still at 40 or 50 on the waitlist. We just opened the window for the new preschool this year, and we already have the applications pouring in. So the popularity of program is a strength. The resources that we've been able to bring into the schools, whether it's through the district budget or through our partnership with Alan Shawn Feinstein, it has been amazing. And I know that we say that every time we come up. But in less than two and a half years, I think we're at $31,000 that we have brought in through Feinstein. And with that, I just want to kind of ramble off some quick resources. You kind of, where's that money going? So if you came to Cushman and you looked at the playground, you would see a brand-new sandbox. You would see the brand-new early childhood play structure. In the classrooms, the teachers, we constantly brainstorm. What is it that we need? We have sensory items, fidgets, chewies, alternative seating, crash pads and bean bags, all kinds of sensory equipment for the kiddos, sound-reducing items. We just got things for the bottom of the chairs, trampolines, dividers, nap mats, software for communication purposes, headphones, storage units. We just recently got multicultural resources and crayons. We constantly are looking like, how can we spend our money? And how wonderful is that to be able to think that way? So here's how we have fun. Most recently, last week, we had our 100th day of school. Children in elementary appreciate and count each and every day that they come to school. And the 100th day happened just last, I think it was the last week or the week before. And here are some friends that dressed up to look like 100 years old. We had other friends count 100 things and put them on their T-shirts. We have a friend counting dinosaurs on his, and another friend that says, "100 Days of Bugging Mrs. Condon." And he's got bugs all over his shirt and bugs in his net. So a fun day. The kids love these kinds of days. We had the opportunity to host a Special Olympics Young Athletes Day, and we had Mr. Capello and Mr. Piveo, Ms. Phillips. We had the high school unified team and our SRO officer, along with some local police, all come together and supporting our preschoolers, and it was an amazing day. Just two quick pictures I wanted to share with you. Little friend going through an obstacle course, another friend climbing the climbing wall. And I love this picture with Ms. Paula, our newest custodian, because there was a former meeting here where she stood here and everybody said, "Everybody knows Ms. Paula." And then how lucky we were at Cushman to have her come and join us. And that is absolutely the case. Everybody knows Ms. Paula. She is on it the minute something is requested of her. She jumps in, she helps out wherever she's needed. And I think that smile just shows you that I think she's enjoying Cushman as well. Some more friends at the Unified Day, where we have Officer Amanda helping a friend with Mrs. Spicer, and we have some related service providers there with some high school support people. It was an amazing day, and I said, "Can we please do this again in the spring?" Because it was just so much fun. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of what one of our community meetings looks like. And I want to tell you that this community meeting was to celebrate our bucket fillers, which you've heard about before through our PBIS program. But also, we wanted to focus on character traits of bravery, sharing, caring, and kindness. And at a previous staff meeting, the staff and I were, I had given them a task where they were getting together in groups and they were acting out the skit. And I thought that I made it clear that we were going to do it at a community meeting. And the day of the community meeting, all of a sudden, I hear that "The teachers don't want to do this. They have no desire to get in front of the kids and do it." I'm like, "Oh, no, today's a community. What are we going to do?" So we switched it on a dime, and we just said, "Well, just see what the kids can do." So you're going to see a little bit of some kids trying to show what bravery would look like and caring and sharing. And also, we had these very special capes, which was new to our community meeting. And one of our teachers had suggested at a staff meeting that we needed to kind of like up it a little bit. Besides just coming up and getting your certificate, let's do something more celebratory. So you'll see what the teachers came up with.
Friends, you just got a cape for kindness. Can you show us your cape? Whoa, all right, turn around. You guys got your bucket filler awards today. Can you each tell me one thing that is kind? Eby, can you tell me first?
Help people feel awesome.
Adrian, you got a bucket filler award today. What was it for? Are you, did you get it for kindness?
Yeah.
Are you a kind friend?
Yeah.
They do. You're so kind. And Kennedy, what does your cape say? Let's see. Oh, yours says kindness too. Do you do kind things for your friends? You do? What's your favorite kind thing to do? Friends, you just got recognized for being caring bucket fillers. Can you show us your cape? Whoa, those are amazing. You were just recognized for being a bucket filler, for sharing. Can you show us your amazing sharing cape? Whoa, that's awesome. All right, turn back around. What kind of things do you like to share with your friends?
Crows and pencils and clay.
That's amazing. Can you do that superhero pose one more time? Whoa, super sharing.
So we hold the community meetings once a month, almost once a month, the last Wednesday of the month. Let's see if I can. Okay, so we are a Feinstein literature school. I mentioned that. Now, we're going to hear some students, and this is not scripted at all. And they're going to talk to you about Feinstein, some of the things that we do. This is our kindness tree. They're going to talk to you about coins. They're going to talk to you about being bucket fillers and what they like about the Cushman School. They're also going to talk to you about Global Play Day. Playing is very important at Cushman. Preschoolers play three times a day. Kindergarten plays twice a day, but we had a day where we just played all day.
Hi, my name is Phoebe.
Hi, my name is Kylie.
Hi, my name is Jackson.
Welcome to Cushman. We're going to tell you all about our school.
When you get a kindness coin, you help other people when they fall down. Would they have a bloody nose? You can go tell their recess monitor. And if they fall down, then you can help them pick them back up.
When we earn them, we, when we do kind deeds, we earn them because we do kind.
Why is it important to be kind?
Because that's really, that's taking, that's a bucket filler and taking care of others and taking our, taking care of our school.
Wow.
And it's taking care of ourselves.
You're right. Is Cushman a very kind school?
Yeah.
Do you have kind teachers?
Yeah.
And kind friends?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Because I have friends and I get away from my house for a little bit. And I, and sometimes when I fall, my friend Isaiah and some other friends help me up. And I'm really, I'm really proud of them. And I want them to be all bucket fillers.
Wow, can you tell us about your teachers?
My teachers are always awesome and they, and they keep, and they, they take care of us.
Do they make learning so much fun?
Yeah.
Yeah? What kind of fun activities do you get to do?
We get to do GT and we get to do, we get to do, and then we get to do, we, and then we have recess.
Do you play games?
I play football.
Oh, fun.
And then I want, and then, and then that's all I'll say.
That's great.
Community meetings, you get tickets for being kind and being helpful. And Dr. Dale sees those people on the cameras, and she's like, "Oh, why don't that person get a ticket and the other one?"
Wow, and do you learn about things at community meetings as a whole school?
Yeah.
What kind of things do you learn about? What are those words that we saw on those capes? Do you remember them?
Oh, I know. I just don't want to say them.
Oh, go stay with her. You can tell us.
I know too.
Go out together. Let's see what we can remember. Kindness.
Sharing.
Sharing.
Bravery.
Bravery, good job.
And this one, that's one, right?
Yeah, it starts with a C.
Carrying.
Carrying, great job.
It's called the kindness tree because you deserve being kind.
I'm going to get out of the line.
And we have Kylie, Vivian.
No, that's Kenley.
Okay. Kenley, Vivian, Thomas is somewhere. We have Anthony.
Here's Thomas.
How do you think it makes these friends feel when their names go up on the kindness tree?
Oh, Jack Dorsey, yes.
Do you think one day your names might be up on that wall for making kind choices?
Yes.
And the, it's called the kindness tree because there's a tree right here. And then these are hearts.
Oh, and can kindness grow like a tree?
Yes.
We can grow kindness?
Yes.
How do we grow kindness?
We be kind to others.
Yes, we actually do.
And these are falling leaves, but they have names on them.
They're beautiful.
And not, that's fine.
So on Global School Play Day, you get to play all day, but you still need to eat lunch and go out for recess. But you get to play all day and you don't have to do phonics and you don't, and you don't.
You don't need to do writers' workshop.
And you don't need to do GG.
Do you think your brain is still growing even when you're playing?
Yeah.
And you're having fun?
And we get, and we get, we get to, we get to skip GG and we get, and we got to play with new things that we never played before, like games and the big box.
And one time.
And big box and hot coke, and the hot cocoa stand.
And, and one time, it was a half a day and we did that. So it was even more fun because we, we even got to go home early.
Yeah. On the play day. On the play day. And we just like, we dressed up like old ladies on the 100th day, and then we get to have some fun.
How special. There are so many great things going on at the school.
We love our school.
So that was really, I mean, it was not really practiced at all, and I thought it was just lovely. And I thought that if I brought them here, they might clam up and not be able to speak as eloquently as they did. I think that, you know, the talented, committed, and dedicated, hard-working staff that we have at Cushman School tries to keep the smiles on the kids' faces every single day. And I think that they're doing a fabulous job at that. And I think our kids are happy, and I think we celebrate, you know, playing as we should at our early age. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Daley?
No, I just really enjoyed the presentation, hearing about everything Cushman.
The ones are good.
Agreed.
Okay, good. Thank you, Dr. Daley. Okay, next on fun stuff, FY24 budget. Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. It's a tough act to find.
It's a tough act to follow.
I was just gonna say, you get to follow this.
I think I need those three to present this budget. Would be a much more entertaining presentation, for sure. Just give Ben a minute here. Perfect. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Um, so thank you all for the opportunity to talk about, uh, the FY24 proposed budget. So, we prepare the budget in collaboration with the school committee subcommittee on budget, uh, all of the, the schools and departments. It's a need, need-based proposal, um, that was, is, is a process that was submitted by the schools and departments, and then compiled into a, um, big picture, um, look at what we need as a district. And then we've been, you know, obviously have to prioritize that. I'm the wrong way there. At the end. So, just to remind everybody, the mission that drives us in this budget preparation is our mission statement, uh, which is to provide quality education for all learners. We try and balance that with a, a number of guiding priorities, um, that you will see reflect our actual proposals. I'll just briefly talk about these. So, to maintain and enrich, uh, quality programs and support services, enhance the use of technology in teaching and learning, maintain reasonable class size, enhance curriculum, instructions, and assessment, support all learners, address social and emotional learning and mental health, and support staff professional development to enhance student learning. So this is sort of our big picture, where we are with this budget proposal. So for fiscal year 24, we're proposing a budget of $51,913,526. You'll see the breakdown there. Uh, the big green piece of the pie is the instruction category. It includes salaries of teachers, principals, teaching assistants, substitutes, other instructional staff, instructional technology, professional development, special education services, books, supplies. That represents 75% of our budget. Are you okay there, Ben? Thank you. Um, the other services portion is the next largest percentage. It's, oh, it's the purple piece of the pie there. That is, includes transportation, attendance, health, athletics, other co-curricular activities, again, 12% of our budget. Next largest is the yellow, uh, piece, and that is maintenance and utilities. So that would include our projections for utilities, our custodial services, and maintenance of the buildings and grounds. It's 7% of our budget. The next largest, uh, piece of the pie is actually, um, out, is outplacement tuition. So that includes special ed tuition payments, um, that we're projecting for next year. That's 4% of our budget. That's the, uh, kind of orangey sort of piece there. The last piece is administration, so that would include the district administration, administrative technology, and legal services. That's 2% of our budget. So we're pretty consistent with, um, these categories in terms of where we were last year in the fiscal year 23 budget, or the current year. But this, this will show you both the change, um, the change from fiscal year 23 to 24 in our proposal. So, instruction increase is 5.4%. It's $2,016,460 in our proposal. So that includes contractual obligations, like things that are, um, already, um, going to happen regardless of our collective bargaining, which is ongoing. So, uh, things like teacher steps, longevity, um, things like that. That's about $524,000. That's about 1.1% of the overall budget. We also have a provision for settlement of the collective bargaining agreements for fiscal years 23 and 24 included there. We have, um, some savings from retirements, but a very low number of retirees this year, which people just, people wanna, uh, wanna stay, I guess, and, and keep going, so we appreciate that. We have, our proposals also ten, are mostly all included in this line, so I'll talk a little bit more, uh, about those afterwards. The administration increase is 6.7%, it's $58,745. 3.4% of the 6.7 is in relation to projected legal costs for next year. 3.3% is related to contractual obligations. Maintenance and utilities, very small increase, 0.4%, $15,855. We're really banking on the fact that the town has some favorable agreements with utility companies and with the solar, uh, agreement to sort of control our costs, which benefit us, uh, certainly more than the, the resident, um, you know, who, who doesn't have those long-term contracts. So, we're banking on that and all the efficiency work that we've been doing to really sort of hope that we're essentially level funding maintenance and utilities for next year. Other services, this is our, our second largest increase. 9% increase. This is in relation to transportation for special education and homeless students. Right now, we're lucky if we can find someone to provide transportation for a new student. So, it is a very challenging environment, uh, for school transportation. There's, you've probably heard, there's just, there's no bus drivers, um, and it's just really between that, the, the, um, fact that vehicles, vehicle replacement has not, you know, they're just not available. And, um, gas prices as well. They have really unfortunately impacted that area of the budget. Tuition, so this, um, I'll talk a little bit about, we've level funded this, but part of why we've been able to level fund this is in relation to a proposal I'll talk about on the next slide that we're, we're excited about. So the overall increase in the budget proposed right now is $2,530,120, or 5.1%. Sounds like something good just happened in the basketball game. Budget recommendations. So, we have recommendation for one ELL teacher. Uh, built, this is built into the instruction category on the previous slide. I'll let you know a little bit about, um, why we've proposed that. So we have, there are different categories for English language learners, um, based on their needs. We have 35 foundational level ELL learners. They are supposed to receive, they're recommended to receive 90 minutes a day of service. We have 26 transitional level ELL students in the district, who are recommended to receive 45 minutes a day of, of service. That is actually, it does sound like a lot, it's actually relatively low incidence, and Dartmouth is a rel, a low incidence, uh, community. But the fact is that there is no way that we can meet those recommendations with our existing three ELL staff in the district. In fact, adding this ELL teacher will not allow us to be, uh, fully meeting these, uh, recommendations. But it will be a step in the right direction, and we prioritize that here. I mentioned the tuition category on the previous page. So, we, uh, in Dartmouth, we have a responsibility, um, for students up until age 22, with special needs. And we are proposing a program to serve those students in-house. We've not done this before. Previously, um, students would be tuitioned out to one of the, one of the programs in the area, typically collaborative program. We, for a number of reasons, uh, we think that an in-house program with opportunities for inclusion, uh, and an environment that students and families are familiar with, would make sense for us. We believe that, um, next year, we would likely have four students in this program. There would be a savings, that's not why we're doing it, but there is a savings. The tuition out would be somewhere between $55,000 and $60,000 a student. We would be proposing, within this budget, um, to hire a teacher and two teacher assistants, uh, to operate this program. We'd also have materials and other costs and, and modification of space. It would be housed here at the high school, um, which again, offers great opportunities for inclusion. We really, uh, really are, are prepared to focus on this. It's been a few years in the making. Um, it's been a discussion going, going on now, um, really even during the pandemic that we were targeting it. So, we're hopeful that, um, we can, we can get support and move forward with this. We also, um, in relation to what Dr. Dale was discussing, have a pre, a new preschool class proposed. So, Dr. Dale mentioned that we have two slots open in preschool right now. We have between six and 13 students reaching age three between now and the end of the school year, and we only have two slots. We need to, um, have room for those students. And because of the numbers, we absolutely need room for those students for next year. So we're proposing to add, um, and add that class, and in fact, we've already posted for a position, just to try, we've actually posted for a teacher assistant and teacher position, um, to attempt to figure out what we're going to do for the rest of the school year, uh, because we have, we have some time, like I said, we have six to 13 students that we believe would qualify at some point, um, you know, during the next few months. So, we've built that in here, and we've also built in a .2, that's basically one day a week, physical therapist into the, um, into the budget. Our current physical therapist has a caseload of 52 and, um, 52 students, and we are hoping to be able to, uh, to change that. This is always kind of the, the sad slide. It reflects the requests from the schools and departments that weren't incorporated into the budget. So, included in this list, um, are requests that absolutely would have a positive impact on students. We're confident of that, but at this time, we were, weren't able to, um, fit them in to the, to the budget request. If we had, our budget request would be an 8.8% increase. We are proposing supporting quite a few of these positions, um, and, and initiatives through alternate means. We're fortunate still to have, um, Essar funds available to us through September 30th of 2024. It will be available for the entire FY24 budget, um, and then expire essentially at the beginning of the FY25 budget, and really not be much use to us in fiscal year 25 in reality. We have 16 positions currently funded and, or partially funded with Essar funds. And it was originally our hope that we'd be able to find a way to begin to incorporate those positions into the, the fiscal year 24 operating budget. You'll see that, um, that was a common theme in the, in the requests from the schools. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. Um, so they're still in Essar for next year. We recognize what that means, and it's going to make the fiscal year 25 budget that much more complicated. I won't read everything on the list, but these are not wish list items. These are things that would make a difference. We wish we had them, but we really need them. And, um, unfortunately, at this point, they're not incorporated into the budget. So, I guess what I would say is that this is our best effort at providing you a budget for your consideration, for what we absolutely feel like we need to do for fiscal year 24. We would love to be able to do more, but we are realistic, and we've had preliminary conversations with the town side of government regarding our funding. I think that our request, um, you know, is certainly, is certainly substantial. We are the biggest budget, um, in the town, and we understand that. We also serve the most people directly every day, and, um, it's important that we have the funding to, to do what we need. I have provided you with backup information, uh, on this. Be happy to take questions now, or take questions over the next couple of school committee meetings. We have an opportunity to, um, deliberate at the next couple of school committee meetings in March, and then, um, and then hopefully, uh, vote at some point in April on the budget. We don't currently have any state numbers, um, so the, the, we have a new governor, as you know. Um, we are anxiously awaiting that, but we're also somewhat pessimistic that it's, it's really gonna help Dartmouth much. Uh, I'd expect a, a mo, very modest, probably, certainly less than what we're, the percentage we're asking for, um, increase in chapter 70 funds, probably to the tune of 1% for chapter 70. That's about a $10 million, um, program, which will probably get $100,000 out of that. So, that's not gonna save us. Um, so, I, I don't see that, you know, making a major difference from what the governor has, has initially sort of previewed to communities, but we'll, uh, we'll keep in mind and keep you informed as, um, you know, as more things develop on the state side of the budget. We, uh, will continue to be meeting with the town side of government, making sure that we're on the same page, um, in terms of communicating our needs, and keep you informed of those discussions as we go. And, um, I just, we've, you know, we've gotten great support in the past. I hope we can count on it again. We certainly need it, so. Do you have any questions?
Chris, Shannon, you, you two, I'll, I'll start with you two, only because of the fact you were on this, so.
Yeah, sure. I guess I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. Kylie. Uh, we're, we're hearing this, seeing this for the second time. It's an unfortunate reality of the, uh, the budget increase. Certainly concerning, um, certainly something though, after, you know, thinking about it myself, having conversations with Mr. Kylie, that I, I think at the very least, it's worth pushing through, um, the, the overall budget, and, uh, I'm hopeful, uh, that we'll find the support. What's more concerning to me is, uh, all these Essar-funded positions that are being paid for with Essar III right now. And we're gonna be, we're gonna have a s, a serious, significant problem, um, for FY25, especially as things, um, you know, no, nothing's getting cheaper right now these days, for sure. So I'm certainly, and, uh, Mr. Kylie's well aware of my concern. My, my other concern, I, I brought to him, and, you know, um, I think it might be worthwhile to have a conversation, or maybe have someone from special ed available, is the, um, the possibility of a new program for the, um, transitional services. Um, I, I, I think it's worthwhile. I think it can be, if it's done properly, um, I, I think it's a, you know, it can work. However, I do have reservations about that, and I would like to hear some more from special education about what the overall overarching plan is for this program. That would be, uh, my two, my two cents on that. Um, yeah, I'll stop talking now.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins?
So I have a question and then a couple comments I wanted to reinforce from our meeting. I can't find in my files the 5.1% increase. Is that the same number that we discussed? Because I thought I remember that the request was a 4.4% increase, but I may have transposed the numbers.
Originally, what we were talking about, so... Originally, what we were talking about, so our original budget subcommittee meeting, which was not a budget proposal.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. I know, I know, we haven't approved the budget yet. I just want to understand where the numbers are.
It was, it was not a budget proposal. It was, we were talking about the fact that our baseline before we consider doing anything else was four-point-four percent. If you add, the exact difference is the difference of.
The things we're proposing.
Yeah, the ELL, the physical therapist, the preschool classroom.
Okay. And then, so then I wanted to say a couple of things for the audience and from our meeting, right? I mean, one of the things we talked about is the things that we're requesting are not even nice to have. They're things that we have to do to meet our legal obligations. And so, yeah, we're requesting five-point-one, but even if we only got that level funded budget, we still have to do the things that we say that we're going to do. We can't not serve students who are entitled to preschool services. So, yeah, we're asking for some additional stuff, but the additional stuff is to meet legal obligations. And I think that's sort of important to point out. The second thing I want to reiterate, and I want to amplify what you said so it doesn't get lost, Mr. Kylie, because I think in current atmosphere, that six-point-seven percent on administration might raise some eyebrows. But I want to note, right, that the personnel levels in central office now, we previously had two assistant supers and one curriculum director. We now have a super and one assistant and two curriculum directors. And so the staffing levels are the same. So that six-point-seven doesn't represent increase in staff. It represents increase in legal costs and increase in our contractual obligation. So it's not like we're on a hiring spree there. We're returning to normal staffing levels in central office. And then the last thing I want to note is, you know, we talked about this in the budget subcommittee meeting, and, you know, I think we all share the concern about the ESAR cliff. And I think, you know, as loath as I am to use sort of non-recurring revenues for recurring expenses, I think we're going to have to look at some of those to ease us off the cliff. Because I don't think we want to go from a million dollars in this to zero in one year. That's going to be hard. And so I think we're going to have to look at some of that non-recurring revenue to potentially roll us down as we can sort of make progress in building those into the budget over several years. And that's what those sorts of funds are typically for. But I think we need to prepare people that we're going to have to look at that to really do that. Because I know, I know there's rightly a lot of hesitation to do that, but I just don't see any other way around it. I mean, we can't just lose all those positions that serve students. It's going to be, it's going to be challenging for sure. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Kathleen?
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for all their points and not to be repetitive. I do agree and concur. I too have some reservations about the transition program. You know, transitioning our special ed director, new superintendent, potential new vision, you know, to help, you know, fill in some gaps and move forward perhaps in this way or another way. I just feel like, I just, I'm really, you know, working in the field and seeing it not work well and seeing that we had a program at Quinn that didn't quite work well. You know, secondary transition, if you just, you know, starts in Massachusetts at the age of fourteen, right? And here, from the age fourteen until a student graduates, turns twenty-two, students on IEPs receive transition services from their public school defined in federal law. It's a coordinated set of activities designed to be within a results-oriented process to facilitate the student's movement from school to post-school activities. Transition services are based on the individual student's needs, taking into account his or her strengths, preferences, and interests. And these services help young adults to live, work, and participate in the community and go on to further education or training as independently as possible when they leave high school. That includes travel training. That includes job trialing. That includes connecting to resources and government benefits. That includes a lot more than what I can just visualize one student and two TAs doing, never mind the potential repercussions if a family and a student are not open to, say, transitioning into our turning twenty-two program at high school. I do have concerns about it being within a physical building, having thirteen, fourteen-year-olds and twenty-two-year-olds in the same building. I would, I don't want to make any assumptions. I'm sure there's been good planning. I've heard, you know, it's been kind of mentioned, but I didn't really quite know when this would come into fruition, or it could be something great. But I would hate to put something into place that's not going to be great in practice. And I would like to hear a lot more about it. And just to be sure, because as it stands, one teacher, two TAs, I don't feel is adequate to support the needs of students with this level of nuanced, coordinated services that change from year to year and really are unique. And how do you, how do you get the kid to the college campus and support the other three in the classroom? And how do you, you know, I have a lot of questions. And so I would love to see a presentation on it. Because, you know, in other districts, you know, having kids work in the cafeteria and bus tables, that really to me is subpar in categorizing it as a skill, post-secondary skill. I, it can be part of it, but I feel like I just have to be vocal about this and express my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Newt. So we'd be happy to get you more information about it and maybe, you know, set something up for the March sixth meeting.
Anything else, Kathleen?
That's it.
No, no, no. If you've got more, you've got more.
They've kind of gone through all of the other depressing financial stuff that we're.
No, my, you know, thank you, Mr. Kylie and all the administrators, to Chris and Shannon for your time on it, type of deal. I'm, you know, not easy, not an easy task type of deal. I kind of agree with Shannon. I had, you know, you know, the note on the sixteen, you know, the falling off the cliff type of deal. It is not, it's not pretty. It's not pretty at five percent because, you know, you know, I'm not hearing much from the state at the moment. I mean, I got an email today about, you know, I just made a note on it, you know, the opioid settlement is, you know, how much, how much is Dartmouth going to get on that? And how much is, you know, are they going to, you know, give to Dartmouth and, you know, get included in the budget? I don't know. I mean, you know, no disrespect. We don't have a budget and finance director. No disrespect to Gary at the moment. So it's, you know, things are a little bit up in the air there too, so. But thank you for all of this. I mean, again, I go, I always go back to the budget request is not funded. It's, these are not pie in the sky. This is, this is not my, oh geez, you know, you know, let's have some fun type of deal. This is not, these are all, you know, middle school, after-school programs, you know, Kushner and the monitor hours, you know, Quinn teaching assistance, that type of deal. Technology increases the expense budget. I mean, it changes all the time. So thank you very much for all of that. And again, this is going to come back. Two quick questions that I have. I'm blindsiding you. I apologize. You haven't heard anything from CIP on a meeting with them?
Not yet.
Not yet. And again, when you have a date from the FinCom to present this.
Sure.
Aside from March sixteenth, that's the only, my only bad.
Okay, okay. I will just let you know that we did receive a fairly extensive list of requests, information requests from the finance committee. So we're in the process of putting that together for them.
Okay. Very good. All right. Anything else? Okay. Old business. Superintendent's search and screening committee update. Mr. Hardy, good to see you, sir. Okay. You passed.
Good evening. So to give you a brief update as to where we are at this point, the superintendent's search committee met on, initially on Wednesday, February eighth. And we, I facilitated a training for them in regards to the requirements of the open meeting law with the search committee and the conflict of interest statute, something I'm required to do by guidance of the Attorney General. So we did that. They signed and returned to me confidentiality statements so that we maintain the confidentiality of the process. Then we met on Friday, February tenth, and reviewed the completed applications that we've received and have begun the process of scheduling preliminary interviews with the search committee, which will take place on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, Wednesday, March first, and Thursday, March second, at which time they hope to complete that part of the process and have for you a number of candidates to be considered finalists for the position that you would then begin to take over the process the following week. So things are going well. The committee's in the, in the process now of submitting questions for the interviews. I will put those together in a document, share them back with the committee, and then we will finalize which questions are going to be asked during the seventy-five-minute interviews for each of the candidates. So that's where we are with that. And Chris, did I skip anything with that part of it?
I think so, Mr., I don't think so, Mr. Hardy. Just back away a little bit here. No, we had some good conversations, some good discussion. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we're able to fit in a Friday evening meeting. And I do want to thank all the members of the screening committee for willing to come out on a Friday night just because of the condensed timeline and trying to stay competitive with the other school, school districts that are interviewing superintendents. We felt that it was really, it was either, our choice was either that or Valentine's Day. So we opted, Katie and I opted to go with the Friday night. So, and thanks to Katie, who's hiding around the corner there for all her, her work on the committee as well. No, what I will say, I don't know if now is the time to do it, but we did have two members of the screening committee withdraw. I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that, but we had a parent member withdraw as well as a teacher withdraw, both due to time commitment and scheduling conflicts. So one of the things that we brought up and we thought it was important to share with the full committee was whether or not what was your, the committee's, the school committee's pleasure on filling these positions. Clearly, we've already made the decision, the group, to who we're going to move forward for preliminary interviews. So if we were to fill these positions, they would just be part of the interview process. Personally, and I'm only speaking for myself and Katie, please come up, share what your thoughts are personally. At this point in time, I don't know if it's particularly necessary. We've already started the process. Mr. Hardy's already gone through the training. So, you know, as much, it was very, it's unfortunate because I thought we were pretty clear with what our, you know, what the time commitments were and what we were expecting. But I do understand that things come up. But my, my thought would be to not fill those, those two positions at this point in time. Katie?
Thanks, Chris. I would agree with that. I think the team is a, though we've only met twice, a well-meshed team. There was good discussion had. I think it might be difficult at this point for a new person to come aboard. But, you know, as Chris said, it would be just for the interview process. So really, the decision is yours.
Sense, again, and again, only me, at this point, just run with what you've got, that type of deal. Because other than that, you've got to, you know, reinvent the wheel, you know, not start all over again, but you're going to have to put a little bit more time in the way because this, these two people would have to go to the training and all that, you know. So just run, personally, run with what you've got. I mean, people knew coming in, we talked about it enough. So. Shannon?
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree. And, you know, it's, we talked about maybe filling one, but you can't really fill one because then you end up with an even number, and you can't really have an even number. And so I think just the challenges of having to go back to the pool and talk to people and confirm if they're still available and retrain them just makes it too difficult at this point. It's unfortunate, but I just think we just have to move forward with what we have.
And if you listen to the finance committee meeting, they thought we had too many people on it anyway, so. You know, I won't go there. Kathleen?
No, I think, yeah, I agree.
Okay. There we go. Run with what we have.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Side of this, well, it's not really a downside, but the reality is both of those groups are still represented. There's still parents and there's still teachers on the committee. So it's not like we're not having representation from those two groups as well. And quite honestly, if you did decide you wanted to fill them, unless you did it tonight, we'd have to delay because they have to be appointed by you. So if you didn't do it tonight, you would have to, we'd have to push the whole thing back until after your next meeting. But I didn't want that to be. But I think the group, the group worked really well the two nights together. They asked really good questions. They were very respectful of everybody's opinions, which is always a very good, a good sign. It didn't pull any punches, but it was all done in a very civil, respectful manner. So that's very, that's very encouraging moving forward. Because we have, as I told them, we have to remember this is a dual evaluation process. Candidates are evaluating Dartmouth and the experience that they have during the interviews as much as you're evaluating them. So it's real important that the interviews stay, you know, stay a very positive experience. And we did chat about that with the search committee as well. Body language, you know, the unspoken language, sitting like this with your head down. It's kind of a negative look. At least pretend to be engaged to, even though you may not like what the person's saying. But it's real important that it's a positive experience for everybody involved. Because at the bottom line, you want them to be here as much as you want them to be here. So like I said, it's a dual, a dual process. The other reason I think I was asked here to come tonight was to talk a little bit about the survey. You should have all received a copy of the summary document as well as the full, the full survey with all of the open-ended responses and so forth. I was really happy with the total number of responses. It was exactly four hundred. I was looking at it the morning. It closed on January fifth. And I was looking at it that morning, and I was like, oh, three ninety-seven. I need three more. And then at like twelve fifty-nine, one came in, and one twelve, one came in. And then about three o'clock, that number four hundred came in. So I was like, all right. So we, if it was four oh one or four oh two, I would have been happy to, but I was glad we got into that four hundred range. So I know you've seen it, but for the, for the benefit of the people here, there were one hundred and eighty-one people who participated who identified as either a parent or guardian of a Dartmouth public school student. There were one hundred and fifty-seven people identified as employees of the Dartmouth public schools. Twenty-six people identified as a resident of the community without children enrolled in the Dartmouth public schools. Twelve were students of the Dartmouth public schools. Six were either Dartmouth local official or town employees, and then seventeen identified as other. And just to give you an idea, grandparent of an enrolled, no, wait, grandparent of a Dartmouth public school student, former school employer and currently have grandchildren attending, former employee as school secretary in Dartmouth and also a parent of three children who went through the Dartmouth system, retired employee of the Dartmouth public schools, connected to community through extended family, grandparent, employee, and resident. So I guess there was two categories. Grandparent with an enrolled grandchild, parent of a child who will be in DPS in a former teacher in town, parent of Dartmouth students and also employee of Dartmouth, retired employee of the school. I am both a parent in Dartmouth school, parent of a Dartmouth school child and an employee, parent and employee, employee and resident without children, employee and parent, employee and resident without children, and resident with child at vocational school who went to Dartmouth Middle and DeMello School. So that made up the seventeen. And that's almost always what happens, is that people have two roles. So instead of picking one, they just click other and put in both titles. But their, their results were calculated in the total as well. So the very first question, again, asked to identify themselves, but question two was. to identify themselves, but question two was, asked the participants to identify the five most significant current and future issues that the new superintendent will need to address. And I listed the top seven. The reason I listed seven rather than five is because after 131, there was a big drop to the next category. So, and the difference between five and seven was only seven votes, so I feel I'll just list seven. But they were, number one, social, emotional well-being of students and staff. That was 197 people identified that as one of the five most significant issues. Curriculum development instruction was second with 187 responses. District school culture was third with 162. Collective bargaining was fourth with 161. Communications with parent and community was fifth with 138. Financial management, building of budget development was 136, and strategic and long-range planning was seventh with 131. And then I said the next number eight was like 118. So, it was a pretty significant drop. What's really kind of interesting with this is, there are a couple of, like, questions that are very similar, but they give you different, it's a different context and a different response. But one of the questions later in the survey asked, listed a series of specific experiences and skill areas that were important when evaluating superintendent candidates, and then it says, how much weight should the school committee give each one of these skill sets? And the rating scale was from critically important, above-average importance, of average importance, below-average importance, or relatively unimportant. So, I bring this up now because social, emotional well-being of students and staff was the number one current or future issues identified. When you think about the skill sets necessary for a superintendent to maybe address those issues, supportive work environment was the number three item listed under question six. Social, emotional well-being of students and staff was 12 out of 15. And promoting or response, promoting DEI was 14th. So, when you think about what the social, emotional well-being of children, and then the school culture, climate, the skill sets were down here, yet the priority was here. So, there was a little bit of disconnect between those two questions. And I bring it up because quite often, we see when that's a high priority, those are highly ranked skill sets. To do that here, it was a little off. And then, under question seven, personal characteristics, a strong communicator was ranked third, and like communication with parents and community was ranked fifth in the other one. So, there was a connection to some similar characteristics. There's breakdowns for each of the categories I provided for you. I don't know if you want me to get into all of that. I will, but you have it, and you were able to review it. Question three was an open-ended question, and what do you believe is, will be the most important issue facing the next superintendent? And, which is a little bit different than the second question, because it's open-ended, and people could free-form with that one. But of the 338 responses to this questions, the words student, staff, and teachers appeared in over 54% of the responses in a positive way. Student comments included concerns over learning loss, lower expectations, and school climate. Those were some of the negative things that came from the student response side. Staff and teachers appear to be in the same category as that response, but many are focused on retaining qualified staff and collective bargaining challenges. And then I provided you a full list of all the open-ended responses. Question four identified 10 positions that a candidate for a superintendent position may have held in the past. And participants were asked to identify their top three choices of experience listed that would be most valuable to the next superintendent of schools in Dartmouth. Overall, and I'm going to do this 1 through 10, teacher was the number one response with 229 responses, or 57.25%. Superintendent in another school district, 202. Assistant superintendent, 189. Building principal, 164. And as you can see, we go from 164, the next one, 74. So, there's, there's a significant drop between four and five. But from there it goes, special education director, 74. Finance business manager, 60. That's probably because you have a good one, and it's not an issue. Curriculum specialist, 51. Leadership position outside the district, 45. Prior experience, doesn't matter, right fit, was 44. And the human resources director was 24, or 6%. But you can see that the top four responses, which is what drove the language in the brochure about, you know, superintendent experience preferred, and administrative experience preferred, and classroom teaching experience required. Those, that's what drove that information in the brochure as far as the minimum qualifications. The next question talked about 11 areas of expertise that a superintendent candidate might possess. In this question, the participants were asked to rank each one, again, as critically important, above-average, of average, below-average importance, and relatively unimportant. And the top vote getters here were goal-setting, strategic planning, and implementation with 309. And what the 140 and 169 numbers represent is, the first number represents someone identified as critically important, and the second number is that above-average importance. So, those were the two numbers that drove the higher ranking. Budget development management was 308 with a 140, 168. Curriculum development and evaluation, 301 with a 159, 142. Special education was 296 with 123, 141. And collective bargaining was 282 with 141, 141. And you can see with the breakdowns, how the difference between the parents and the employees' numbers broke down, as well as the town employees. In fact, when you look at the town employees, there was, the number one response was goal-setting, strategic planning, and implementation. And then there were five others, one tied with five votes. And those were budget development, curriculum development, facilities, public relations, and collective bargaining. Those were the five. We talked a little bit about question six already, but again, experiences and skill areas that would be important when evaluating superintendent candidates, again, critically important, above-average, so forth. And the number one item was ability to develop and direct an effective administrative team, 366 votes, or 259 and 107. 259 people thought that that was critically important for the next superintendent of schools to have that experience or skill set. Understand and recognize as good teaching was second with 362. Successful creating and supporting work environment, 360. These are very close. Success in achieving high expectation and outcomes for all students, 347. Then again, it dropped. There was a gap between these two. And if you look at the breakdown of each of the groups, with one exception, each of them have two of the same things. Question seven, again, weighed personal characteristics the superintendent of schools may possess. Number one was a problem solver, 373 combined votes. Approachable, 357. Strong communicator, 352. Collaborative, 347. And empathetic, 329. And I wanted to point out that the absolute last number 11 skill set was risk taker. And it received the most relatively unimportant skill sets out of that whole list. So, that should tell you something, that people don't want a risk taker. And the other, the next one was assertive. That was number 10. So, I think it's real clear that people are looking for someone who's collaborative, approachable, good communicator. Again, that's what drove the characteristics that were listed in the brochure. And that's, again, question eight was a opportunity for people just to provide additional input. And you have, you have the list of the full responses. Should be noted that about 77 of the, 77% of the responses were identified as either neutral, neutral meaning they were neither positive nor negative. And most of those comments were, thank, you know, thank you for allowing us to participate. And then there were some that were advocating for, Mr. Kylie? And then there were some who were advocating against other people, which I won't mention. But, and then, you know, some of the issues you might expect that were brought up, there's, there were as many people talking about the need for more work on diversity, equity, inclusion, as there were people saying, get CRT out of our schools. And they would, they'd about balance off, balance out each other. But that's a quick summary of the survey. I can provide you the breakdowns by group if you want, so you can see what the top ranking, the whole summaries of all of them, if you want, I can do it. So, it's electronic now in Excel, so it's up to you. But, but the results of that, the survey is what drove, what was in the brochure, which was what drove what the applicants highlighted in their application packets. So, this had, this survey had a direct result in impacting the skill sets that people are looking for in the, in the applications.
It served two purposes. It's good.
Plus, it provided people the opportunity to provide input that otherwise they wouldn't have had. And 400 people took advantage of that.
That's right, which is nice.
Yeah. It's the second highest one I've received.
Wow. Wow. Appreciate, you know, appreciate the fact that, you know, they took the time to do that.
Also, it's, you know, it's incumbent, I can't, I can't send the survey to people. I don't have their email addresses and so forth. So, it was, you know, it was very helpful that Mr. Kylie got the, get the word out, get the word out to the town, got the word out to people, put it up on the website, made the link real easy to find from, from what people tell me. It was real easy to participate. The average time it took somebody to complete the survey was seven, seven and a half minutes from start to finish. That was the average. Some people skipped certain questions, so not all 400 answered all questions. But, and some of the last, the last question, the response was simply, thank you, thank you, thank you. So.
Yeah. So, that's good. Thank you, sir. Questions?
No, thank you, Jim, for coming out. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So, we're working on the schedule for the week after school vacation week for interviews. I've contacted the people involved, and I'm waiting to get confirmation back that they're accepting their time, and that they don't have conflicts.
Excellent. Perfect.
All right. As soon as I have that, I will forward it to the search committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim.
All right.
Much appreciated. Safe travels.
Yeah.
Say well. All right. Mr. Martin?
Well, I'm.
Or Ms. Amaral. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I welcome him, but I am prepared to, we drew straws.
Service administrator screening committee update.
So, Mike and I, Mike, Mr. Martin and I are co-chairs of that committee, and we have met through Zoom a couple times. And we're looking forward to having a, you know, thoughtful and organized, transparent process with the utmost respect of everyone's time and making sure that we're sort of maximizing our time together. So, we've met, Mike was good enough to utilize his skills in Google and sent out to our committee a form that included confidentiality statement was embedded in the, in the form for folks to sign and return to us before our first meeting. We also, we actually, we reached out to Mr. Kylie, and instead of reinventing the wheel, we thought we would begin with sort of a framework, and then once we meet with our group, formulate, you know, more specifics. But Mr. Kylie was kind enough to forward us some of, well, a very organized information as to how we proceeded last time we were in this situation. And he provided us some great information to help us with this process. And also, Kate has been incredibly helpful in central office with responding and actually helping us figure out best ways to move forward. Mike sent out a, with that confidentiality statement, we, we had a bank of questions that were used in prior, you know, they, they really were, well, a wide range of questions categorized, you know, in a certain way. And so, we thought we would use that as a draft, and we asked our, our committee members to share their, well, we asked them for us to let us know their availability to meet this week, and time, you know, day and time, which we decided upon, you know, an average, most folks were available. We're going to meet in person on Thursday in the afternoon at Bush Street. We also asked them what qualities, characteristics, and experience that they would want to see in an ideal applicant, as a way to, you know, provide. And it was kind of neat. We reviewed today the responses, and I think we, the consensus as to what folks are, on the committee, are hopeful that we will get with our, you know, our applicants and what we want to look for. So, we thought that having that word, word bank, right, that visual of all those words that folks kind of submitted as ideal, an ideal candidate would, would be, and that would help us as we do the work on Thursday. And that work is going to be, we're going to convene, we're going to review the applicants, we're going to come to consensus and finalize questions. And our intention is to, you know, again, with the committee, building consensus with the committee, our intention is to begin interviews the week following vacation. So, that's, did I miss anything, Mike? So, that's it.
Let me ask, did I miss something? Because I saw, was there a bank of questions I was?
We're going to give that out on Thursday.
Yes.
I got the, I got that one that was on the, that I filled out and sent back. I was just, you know, with my wonderful computer skills, I'm figuring, I missed something.
You'll get that. You'll get that. Yeah.
That's fine.
But like I said, it was, it was nice to see that, it seems like most everyone had, you know, there were a variety of things that folks wrote in, but, you know, they all sort of were in the same, you know, similar in terms of the qualities that we want, we want to see. So, that was good already to know what we're, what we're up against meeting on Thursday. So, that's right. John's on the committee too with me. Fun, fun times.
Okay. Any comments for Ms. Amaral or Mr. Martin? Any comments? No? We're good. Okay. Thank you. All righty. Superintendent update.
This is quick. We had Phoenix talk about the high school information, so I don't have to go over any of that. Potter sent some information about, I think one of the really great things that they're having tomorrow at a staff meeting is Dr. Carolyn McCurney will be working with the staff. You might remember her name from the South Coast Collaborative. She's worked with us for many years, working on de-escalation techniques, behavior therapy, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's happening. It's, as we had the Super Bowl, most of the schools are doing the canned good collection for the soups, soup collection. And so, that's been ongoing, and will be going, continuing. PBIS rallies are happening, and Potter was saying they were having a, on Tuesday, featured a dance act by some fifth graders, and the highlight was a, will be a visit from the high school kiddos that are coming. So, that's good. And they're also having some family fun nights. Today was at the middle school, I think tomorrow they're having it as well. I ran over there today. The grade in New Bedford Regional Refuge Management Group had a presentation for the sixth grade. It was all about recycling and the landfill and all of that. So, it was, it was very informative information. And DeMello was talking about celebrating the January Student of the Month today, and all And Mello was talking about celebrating the January Student of the Month today and all preparing for the Read Across America as well. And I also just wanted to mention that last week, we did have a district meeting as well, again, with the district team that's working on the Portrait of a Learner. We did use the town hall again, and unfortunately, the facilitator ended up getting sick at the airport and had to go to emergency. So they virtual, they remoted in and all was well. Ross facilitated that meeting with the, the group. But we're just in that moment now where all of the schools have worked on characteristics of the Portrait of a Learner. So all of that work is coming together from the entire district. And as it proceeds, one of the things, the comments that came out was, it's a time we'll be taking from poster to practice over the rest of the year and then rolling it out for the new year that folks really know what does it mean to be a Portrait of a Learner in Dartmouth. So that's, that's the work that's going on in the district right now. I'm done.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. Couple of things. First and foremost, I just want to thank Jean and her crew in the cafeteria tonight for a beautiful reception for Dr. Gifford. Thank you to Jim and Chris for helping facilitate that. Much, much, much appreciated. The, and I realize some of this is coming, is down the line, but March 18th, the music department is having their annual winter home show percussion color guide, winds type of deal. At the moment, starting at 2:00, JV Color Guide is on at 2:15. Awards are at 6:00. Then at 6:55, the winds are on. And then at 9:05 is percussions with awards right after. So I'll be sending out an email looking for presenters, you know, at 6:00 and also, you know, 9:30 on that, that Saturday night. Just so everyone is aware, our Varsity Color Guide will not be performing. That's when they're going to be in Pennsylvania. That's that night that they've got to go to Pennsylvania to, to do that. The music department's annual pops concert is going to be March 9th, a Thursday night. And every year for scholarships and every year we honor someone. And this year, we happen to be honoring Dr. Gifford. Unfortunately, she's going to be on vacation, but that's okay. You know, we will mention her and we'll have someone here from her family type of deal. But also the night of percussion on April 6th, when all the groups get together, and I understand there's some possibly groups from Pennsylvania that are going to be in the area that are going to join us type of deal. And we will give you your plaque and cadews that night type, type of deal. That being said, I think we all know. So I have from the Board of Selectmen that has arrived, Town of Dartmouth Official Select Board Citation. Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Dr. Bonnie Gifford in recognition of your selfishness and dedication as Superintendent of Schools and wishing you the best for an enjoyable retirement. And it is signed by all the members of the Dartmouth Board of Selectmen. So Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Yeah.
Yep. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Bonnie, Dr. Gifford, for your many years of service to the Dartmouth Public Schools. Like I've said in previous meetings, it seems like yesterday that we were conducting a site visit for you, and we're interviewing you. And certainly, time does go by rather fast. It's been a heck of a past three years for, for you, for the district, for everyone, but certainly for any superintendent of schools. So I just want to thank you for your dedication to the students and staff, and it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, certainly, we're always very respectful of one another, and we sometimes didn't agree, but that's all right. That's what makes, that's what makes it, you know, it's exciting. So thank you, and I wish you nothing but happiness in retirement.
Yeah. I'll also extend my thanks, and particularly my thanks for not retiring during the pandemic. I can't imagine having to transition into a search during all of that. So super appreciate that part, but, but also you're, you're overall, because I'm sure it would have been easy to be like, that's it, I'm done. This was, it was hard times, and we appreciate you steering us through those hard times and also the good times we've had. So thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's just the same. Thank you. It's, I just can't believe how, how time flies, but much success in your retirement fun and relaxation.
Yes. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And again, I don't want to repeat myself, but we've had a number of little meetings with our DLT, your district leadership team and central office, et cetera, and just let them know it's really been a privilege to be here. And if you're going to end your career in a district, it's a great district to have done it in. Our team worked so well together. And as you mentioned, through COVID and everything, the late nights, we all, I don't know, it was terrible, really. But we did make it, and I think we were in shell shock at that moment. So nobody could retire. It's just like, where are we? But it's been a great place to work, and I wish obviously the next superintendent the best of luck. And I know with the leadership team that we have and, and the, the work that's going on in the schools that it'll be, it's going to be in a good place. So again, I appreciate everything. Thank you. Thank you.
All the best. Enjoy.
I will.
Enjoy the warm weather.
I will enjoy it.
And there's still some students that would like a snow day before you leave, but I don't think that's happening. Looking at, looking at the long range forecast.
I don't think so. It's 50s this week.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see that happening. All right. With that being said, our next school committee meeting is.
Mr. News?
Yes?
Can we also take up Mr. Kylie emailed to us that we have received an open meeting law complaint? So perhaps Mr. Kylie can sort of take over and fill us in on that one?
Sure. I'd be happy to. So we received on Thursday afternoon, a open meeting law complaint. It complains that our minutes do not contain a list of all the documents and other exhibits used by the public body during the meeting. So I guess the first thing I would say is that our minutes do list the documents that are utilized by the school committee during meetings. They do not have a separate list. So depending on how you interpret the law, and I included the law in my email to you, it may be interpreted that there should be a list of documents, not just that they're listed. Kind of a finer point, but we've received that complaint. It's easy enough for us to comply to. Mrs. Gansner does an unbelievable job with the minutes, and I, she has already indicated that she'd be adding a separate list in addition to them being listed in the body of the, the body of the minutes when they're referred to by the committee. So we're prepared to respond to the complaint and I think, but the complaint does require that the school committee review the complaint. And if the committee agrees with our suggested resolution, if you just would authorize myself to respond to the complaint, I'd be happy to do that on behalf of the committee.
Shannon?
So I have a question. This may be a dumb question, but I assume the list of documents is so that people can FOIA them in case they want to see them. And I don't want to create more work, but is it just easier to include the documents with, along with it, or are there reasons not to do that?
I would just say that there, there is no legal requirement that
To include them, I know.
The documents be included and incorporated as part of the minutes. And I think when we're talking about documents that are hundreds of pages potentially, it may not be practical. We're happy, I mean, we're certainly, those documents are available whenever someone would like. So, but we're happy to comply with certainly your wishes or, or my suggestion in terms of just including a list.
Yeah. I guess just from my sense, and my, this is my personal opinion, I'm a big advocate for openness and transparency. And so to make those sorts of documents available to the public, the same as they are to us, I think would be good practice. I don't want to suggest we do that as a remedy right now. We've got 14 days to respond, and so let's just do that and be done with it. But I do think it's good practice and open, transparent governance to have the documents that are available to us, available to the public so that they can view them at any time. So that would be my first point, and maybe that's something that we can discuss at another meeting. It's not, it doesn't have to be the response to this. The other thing I was thinking about in thinking about documents and also watching Phoenix over there scrambling to take notes on some of the stuff, can we include our student representative on the circulation of documents that are not confidential? So obviously, you know, executive session minutes or grievances or contract negotiations or any of that, I would not want, they can't be included on that. But I think it would help him be more informed about what we're doing and what we're talking about if he had access to the same materials that we did. So I just, for me, it's about being open and transparent in what we're doing and making those materials available to people. I don't want to create a lot of work, so I'm not saying that we should respond to this one in this way, but I just don't wonder whether we might think about that as a general
Chris?
No, I, I think it's worth having a conversation at some point about that. That's fine. But I'm, I was just going to say, I, I agree with Mr. Kylie's recommendation as far as how to resolve this, this complaint.
So why don't we just make a motion so it's in the minutes and he can fire that off to the Attorney General and that type of deal?
So do we just need a motion that we delegate the, I'll make a motion that we delegate the responsibility to respond to Mr. Kylie and that Mr. Kylie will work to include in the minutes of January 19th, all of the, a list of all of the documents and other exhibits used by the school committee within that, the body of the minutes, and that future minutes of the Dartmouth School Committee will include a list of all the documents and other exhibits used during the meeting at the end of the minutes.
Jim?
You referenced January 19th.
January 9th, sorry.
Okay. Would you like us to revise the minutes that you voted those minutes already, or would we just be acting moving forward?
Just, why don't we just act, why don't we just move forward?
Yeah.
From, from, you know, tonight, you know.
That's fine.
Tonight's meeting, minutes forward.
That's fine.
February 13th forward. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We don't need to hold another motion, right?
No. Just use the language that Mr. Kylie used in his email.
Yep.
Not the one that I said out loud.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries in the end. And before I forget to, of course, Mrs. Waite's not here, but she does wish you much happiness on return.
Thank you.
All right.
One quick, quick thing, because we're not meeting before this happens. The Special Apparent Advisory Council is hosting a Zoom meeting on February 28th at 6:00. And the topic is we're bringing in Massachusetts Advocates for Children, and they're going to go over the anti-bullying law. And we've had them years past. I just thought it would be a good idea to bring them back and revisit that around school strategies to prevent bullying of students with disabilities. And the folks can find this flyer on, in our backpack, our electronic backpack, as well as on our CPAC's Facebook page. And again, it's Tuesday, February 26th at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
All right. No problem. Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 6th, 2023 year at 6:30. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for an update pertaining to collective bargaining with union personnel and also have two level three grievances and not return to open session.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Amaral on the motion. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Ms. Gansner.
John News?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the evening and happy Valentine's Day, and please be safe on school vacation.